Can enjoy the ride.
Don't get in a car when you're angry. Take a walk instead.
And never get behind the wheel.
We need to do this.
Uh, well, go.
Funny guess.
I need to gavel. Uh, so tonight's planning commission meeting on November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. I get a. Space flag, put your hand on your heart, feet after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Commissioner Kristin.
Here.
Commissioner Chura.
Here.
Commissioner George.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Rosa is absent. Vice Chair Brock.
Here.
And Chair Noman.
Here. Okay, moving on to the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Great. Any second?
I'll second.
All right, so noted. Next, move on to communication. Is there any city council items?
Um, not with this, um, actually with the city council. Uh, they did introduce the zoning changes and adopted the general plan changes related to the landslide regulations. And the, um, adoption of the zoning changes will be on, uh, next Tuesday's, um, agenda.
Okay.
And then, um, for staff, uh, we just wanted to let you all know, we're working on the updates, um, revisions to the wireless ordinance based on feedback provided by a, uh, working group of the, um, wireless providers. Um, so that will be, be coming before the subcommittee again, and then again before the, the planning commission. So just want to give you the heads up that that will be coming.
Thank you. Uh, any commission communication? Yes?
Just want to congratulate Commissioner Kristin on his daughter's graduation from the Naval Academy. Very impressive.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, she's, uh, done something I could never do, so.
That's great. Uh, I'd like to share too, um, I went to the, the mayor's breakfast on Friday and it was our, our current mayor's last monthly breakfast. But there was a, so a few great other commission items that, uh, or committee items that I'd like to share. Uh, one was related to the emergency preparation drill they did last month. Related to a mock wildfire, which the city, it sounded quite impressive that the staff underwent. So that was exciting to hear. Another one was related to, they're gonna have a soft opening of the park trails next month. Soft opening. And then also there, the traffic committee is working on some, um, studies on some traffic circles. Some old stuff as well. So there was, we felt, or I felt definitely as if I was freeloaded because I didn't have much to add. But, um, it seems like there's a lot of other work currently happening in the city. All right, moving on to, uh, comments from the audience regarding non-agenda items.
Um, we have no one signed up to speak. If anybody in the audience, um, wanted to speak, we have speaker cards out front. Seeing no good take, no takers.
No takers. Uh, consent calendar, approval of the minutes. I move to.
I wasn't here, so I'm not gonna.
I'll second.
Great.
Okay, um, roll call on that. Commissioner Kristin.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Chura.
Yes.
Commissioner George.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Santa Rosa is absent. Vice Chair Brock.
Abstained.
And Chair Noman.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, moving on to continued public hearings. There are none, uh, new public hearings. There are none. Continued business, none. New business.
Yes, so tonight we have the, um, the planning commission's twice yearly, uh, update on and work plan. Um, and with that, we have Octavio Silva is joining us online and he'll be providing the presentation.
Great, thank you.
I thank you, Brandy. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission. Uh, the next item on the agenda here is the planning commission's twice yearly update and work plan. Uh, planning commission may recall that the city council policy number fifty-four requires, uh, the boards, commissions, committees to present, um, uh, annual, I'm sorry, I have something blocking my screen here. But to present status reports to the city council, which include a list of accomplishments for the previous six months, as well as a work plan for the next six months. Uh, in front of us, we have accomplishments for the planning commission for the last six-month period. Uh, those accomplishments include, uh, completion of a view ordinance workshop, uh, as well as the planning commission zoning code subcommittee participated in a safety element update meeting. And the planning commission also provided code amendment recommendations to the city council regarding exemption of SB nine development within the city's equestrian overlay district, as well as zoning code updates and general plan tax amendments, uh, for the landslide complex regulations. In terms of a work plan for the next six months, uh, the table here outlines a number of, uh, tasks and projects. Uh, the first includes conducting meetings to consider land use development applications. Uh, those meetings would be scheduled on an, on, uh, on an as-needed basis, uh, through the course of the six months. The planning subcommittee will also continue participating in the update of the safety element of the city's general plan. Uh, this would also be ongoing, providing feedback to, to city staff and consultants. Next is the planning commission working on the planning division, with the planning division on targeted code amendments related to housing element programs, recommended clarifications on the city's residential building height provisions, and updates to the city's wireless telecommunications facility ordinance. Uh, city staff is currently working with the city attorney on these required code updates, and the meetings with the planning commission are still to be determined. Uh, the PC subcommittee participation, uh, it would also be required for an update to the conservation and open space element. This is a new project, uh, in addition to the update of the safety element. Uh, this update is required by, by state law. And staff anticipates that this project would begin in early twenty twenty-six with, uh, planning commission subcommittee input, uh, soon after. And again, this project would be ongoing through the next six months. Uh, this next slide provides a snapshot of development applications being processed, uh, for planning commission consideration. Uh, since January of this year, the planning commission, the planning division has accepted, uh, twelve, twelve new development applications, uh, which are highlighted in the table here. Uh, in terms of processing these applications and, and others that are in the pipeline, uh, in the beginning part of next year, the planning commission will be considering a, uh, a number of development applications. Those include a height variation permit, an appeal request for a direct or approved height variation permit, along with other, uh, applications for development in the city's coastal zone, a conditional use permit, and, uh, a variance. Uh, in terms of next steps, the city council will consider the planning commission's twice yearly update and work plan on January twentieth. Uh, city staff, uh, kind of requests that the chair or the vice chair be available to attend the meeting in order to answer any questions, provide any input, uh, that the city council may, may, may request. So in terms of recommendations for this evening's meeting, uh, staff recommends that the planning commission review and discuss the items included in the planning commission's twice yearly, uh, update and work plan to the city council. This concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Commissioner Chura?
Yes. Thank you, Octavio. Nice to see you. Uh, can, can you back up a couple of slides? I just have a small question, one more. There's a new, I'm, uh, uh, one plus. One, one more slide from there. Uh, go, they're right there. There.
There you go, thank you.
Remote control is rough. When was the last time the conservation and open space elements were updated?
Uh, they were updated in twenty eighteen as part of, uh, sort of comprehensive update to the general plan.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi, Octavio, I'm just gonna ask how we can become more proactive in not being a rubber stamp organization, right? So we, we get items that come to us that are almost retroactive. You know, sign this because we've already approved it, or we're gonna approve it next week, and there's really no chance to, to make any feedback. And I understand that it's the city council's purview to do that, but I think that as a body, we would appreciate the opportunity to be able to help them to look at these, you know, a little bit more in detail and give them a little bit more thought. I don't know how we add that to our, our work plan, but, um, I just want to be of, uh, greater service to the, the council because as you can see with all the ministerial reviews now, we actually, um, had kind of a light year, right? So th- this committee could, I think, undertake, um, a little bit more, um, in that direction.
And I think we're gonna see a lot of that with the, um, the safety element. We'll, we'll start having, um, some community input on that as well as the open. I think the open space and conservation element is probably gonna be even more robust than the safety element as far as that input. And th- those will be opportunities, we'll make sure that, um, in addition to the subcommittee being able to, um, you know, go over any, provide any feedback, it would also be an opportunity that you could attend the, any of the community meetings outreach that we're doing so that you can see what the feedback is and you can really hear what the community is saying. So I think that, um, those are gonna be some opportunities. I know some, some things are gonna be, the city councils make, I, I know.
It's just the nature. I'm not complaining, and I'm not saying like, anybody's, you know, like, hey, man. All I'm saying is, when practicable.
Yeah.
If we can have the opportunity to, to look at these things so that we can provide guidance that they can choose to accept or ignore, but at least then, um, I think we would feel that our voice was heard.
And we can certainly add something in the report that we, um, that's provided to city council to let them know. And, and Chair, if you're able to come for that meeting in January, that would be a great opportunity to be able to share that, that, that the, um, that the committee is looking to be of service to the city council on these items.
I, I would certainly second that and, and certainly bring up the idea that asking for recommendations after things have been approved is moot. Right, so, um, it takes some, it takes some leadership to come up with the desire to do things before the clock has run out. And that's, that's what we can ask for. But i- if I may interject one other piece on that, which is, um, all three of those, uh, elements you're talking about, your meeting with the subcommittees, it might be worth our time to review the, the composition of the subcommittees so we can actually give some of our new folks a chance to participate in those subcommittees versus the old-timer types. I'm termed out in six months, so I won't be living with whatever you come up with. So, um, that might, we might review that compass, composition at a, at a future meeting. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but i- if, if the, if the commission is, is willing.
We could bring that to the, um, agendize that for the next meeting. Yeah, because we'll, we'll have a meeting on December ninth.
Okay, I mean, I, I wouldn't create a meeting for it, but.
No, no, we, we already have, we have the meeting on December ninth. We already have another item there. So it would be an opportunity to add that to the agenda, make, you know, we'll provide wh- what, who's on which committees. I think that there was a, uh, that you voted on who was on each committee, uh, back in, in July, so we'll make sure that we have that.
It's been a year, so, it's been, you know, six months, you're right. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's worth it to look at the committees, in fact, with, with some notice now, everyone can review what these committees are, get an idea of what they do, and then they can, you know, we'll give you a short, a short straw to pick out.
I think, sorry, it might be helpful to have, uh, I guess, the standing housing element committee. I mean, where I think we're halfway through the cycle, right? So even trying to get ahead of it in terms of doing a midway review and about how we can have a better run on it, you know?
I, I think we do have that committee. It's a, it's a joint city council, planning commission, committee, but it simply has not met. I've been on that committee and we haven't met in years.
And it might be worthwhile to do that. You know, we're, we're starting to implement some of the programs and just for informational purposes for you to know what has, um, has been, yeah, we've been working on so that we're complying with our housing element.
Right, there's, there's rumors of legislation that will, if we haven't ma- met fifty percent of our target by the fifty percent date, that there will be repercussions. I don't know what they will be. Of course, my questions have evolved since you've all spoken, which is great. You know, we've been working on the safety element.
Yeah.
And of course, one of the components of the, uh, conservation and open space, there's a lot of overlap with that there. But, um, first question is, is, has there been scheduled for community outreach for the safety element? For one, one question. And, and as far as like the entire general plan, is there kind of a, some sort of a matrix that can be discussed as to how all these elements are actually being worked through, especially with your comment regarding that we're halfway through the housing element? Because we're kind of getting caught behind on a lot of these factors.
What was the, the first question was, oh, we had not started.
Scheduling.
Yeah, we have not scheduled yet because we're, um, we're awaiting the results of some of the, the studies that, um, that the consultants are gonna be evaluating. So then we'll, we'll be scheduling something in early twenty twenty-six for the community outreach.
February?
I, I, I'm not gonna say February and then have it be January or have it, yeah, right. So, um.
In the spring.
But we will make sure that, that, that you're aware of, of those meetings because it's gonna be something that comes before you.
But again, also, I think, um, hearing a, kind of a general consensus is that, uh, kind of, uh, a, a matrix of these deadlines and all the different elements and all different parts of this coming together so that there can actually be bona fide participation in shaping, um, some of these processes.
Right, um, with, with these elements, I would say a couple of years ago, we wouldn't have needed the safety element update or we wouldn't have needed the, um, the open space and conservation easement updates. However, there have been changes to the state legislation that have mandated certain things that will trigger it. You need to update your safety element once your housing element's updated, for example. Um, and then there were, um, two different bills regarding, um, uh, the conservation and open space, um, elements. So, um, tho- and which triggers us having to update those. So, uh, as we find out, we can add that to the matrix, um, right? You know, otherwise twenty eighteen, I mean, this is, we're talking about a twenty-year plan. So it's, it's, you know, we're not, when you're looking at the general plan, um, you're looking twenty to thirty years out. That said, they can be updated when needed. And, um, and the state has determined, and the housing element has to be updated every eight years, um, for the cycle ba- based on the state regulations. So we can, you know, let you know, like, here's, here's when everything was updated last and what's being updated now. At some point, maybe we might need to, like, look at our circulation element, um, uh, you know, based on whatever might trigger and, and change that. But I don't know that there is legislation on specific dates on every one of the elements, but we can definitely let you know what has triggered the need for these, these particular elements.
As a point of clarification on that, traffic circles are kind of a circulation element, are they not?
They.
I mean, it's a traffic safety or is it circulation? Is that part of that?
Circulation is gonna be, um, kind of the bigger picture. It's not gonna, like, necessarily specify where traffic circles are best or not. You know, it's, it's going to look at the bigger picture of the circulation in the city, the different modes of transportation. It will, there will be some component of safety there, um, but just also looking at signalization. I think that, um, I'm sure our, our circulation element supports a lot of the work being, that we have been working with Caltrans on, on Western Avenue, for example. So, um, you know, because looking at the signalization and making sure that the flow continues through on, on major three ways. So there's a lot that goes into a circulation element. I don't know that traffic circles are necessarily called out in it, yeah.
By the way, traffic on Western Avenue is so, it's a great street to go on now with all this work that's been doing, with all the signals, so.
Chair, may, may I just add one point with regard to the housing element is, um, even though the next deadline for approving the seventh cycle of the housing element is in twenty twenty-nine, um, actually, um, the SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, in twenty twenty-seven or maybe late twenty twenty-six will be soliciting information from the cities as to what should be considered in developing the RENA for the next round. So it's all gonna be moving very quickly and, um, so it is important that, you know, the city is aware and thinking about how, what type of information you want to provide to the SCAG. Hopefully to influence the RENA that's, you know, determined for the city, so.
Well, let me ask you a question, since you've introduced this topic, counselor. Is membership in SCAG required?
Well, that's, um, I. Well, you, you wanna, well, maybe Brandy can talk about it because there's regional SCAGs, but the, then you have the big Southern California Association of Governments, so.
Yeah, with Southern California Association of Governments, it's not like if we aren't a member, we don't get RENA.
No, I, I know that, but, but we do get to negotiate for ourselves rather than appealing to them, which we've done several times and failed.
We.
Meaning, meaning they, they, they denied our appeals.
Right, they, they denial, denied all, SCAG denied all but one city's appeal. They.
Yeah, I, I'm not really trying to broach the topic of should we be in SCAG as much as the, the, the point of fact of whether it's required or not.
Um, it's, we are covered by the SCAG region, so I do, I don't, I'm not sure of the makeup as far as if it's a membership so much as it's, because I think it's different than, um.
Than, than. California cities.
South Bay cities.
That's certainly optional, the California cities.
California cities, that's, that's an organization. Even the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, um, it, I think that that's, you know, that's not, it's something that's, um, addressing the mandatory regulations and such, whereas SCAG, that they're, they're, um, one of their jurisdictions is determining how to distribute the RENA for the SCAG region amongst the municipalities. And what John's talking about of late twenty twenty-six or early twenty twenty-seven, they'll start working on their methodology. And, and with that, that's when you have the input, but they're not gonna necessarily look at each individual cities. Uh, I mean, they'll look at everybody's feedback on what the methodology would be, but they're not gonna say, oh, well, yeah, we think this particular. this particular city should have X. It's going to be based on, they have a formula that they create.
Yeah, I got that. I mean, the reason I bring it up is, on a number of occasions, probably two or three in the last few years, I've stood in for the mayor at some local meetings, particularly with beach cities, where we were discussing the concept of something called shared RENA. We were discussing how we might share our RENA, our RENA requirements between cities who are looking to grow and cities who are looking not to grow. And to see if they could, and that was a consortium of Redondo Beach and various others. But I don't know that SCAG is considering such stuff. That's why I just asked the question, do we have an option to, to create our own consortium, or do we not? And if we don't, then we don't.
Yeah, not for determining your RENA, yeah.
For, for SCAG, we are required to be member of SCAG or whatever you call, I guess we're not a member of SCAG. SCAG is, SCAG is our overlord.
Our cities, our cities' RENA obligation will be based on what SCAG determines.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, you introduced the topic, Counselor. I thank you for it, I appreciate it, thank you.
The only thing I would add is, as Brandy indicated, is once you get the RENA, the possibility of getting it changed is not going to happen, so.
But it was one of the van cities in SCAG, right, who got their appeals?
There was one, and it was because they had, the determination was, they had all this vacant land, but it was at the base of a dam. So it was, you know, in this, you know, the spillover if something were to happen to the dam, and they, they were able to get, but what happened was.
Apparently dams weren't considered in the formula.
What happened was the adjustment of their RENA, those housing units had to then be redistributed amongst the rest of the SCAG.
I got it, there's a, there's, remember we talked about, it's a, it's, you push one down and another comes up, right? Thank you for, for that, I appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions?
This was the clarification section too, sorry about that.
It's, it's not a public hearing, so it's okay, yeah. And with that, we don't have anybody signed up. Nobody submitted their cards, so.
All right, should we move into discussion? Let's move into discussion.
So then we would move to just approve the recommendation? Is that the?
Yeah.
I move to approve the recommendation that we review and discuss the items to be included. So, well, we've done that, right? So I don't even have to give the motion.
It would be the recommendation that we provide this to the City Council.
Okay, I move to make the recommendation, provide this to the City Council, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Kristin. Commissioner Chura.
Yes.
Commissioner George.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Santa Rosa is absent. Vice Chair Brock.
Yes.
And Chair Noman.
Yes.
Okay.
Chair, Chair, before I, before I log off, just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, same to you.
Thanks you too, Octavio.
Octavio.
Okay, we'll see you, thank you.
Okay, next is items to be placed on future agendas.
Yes, so for the December 9 meeting, we do have a height variation permit and site plan review for 3807 Pirate Drive. And then as well, I will bring back the item of the, the makeup of the, the composition of the subcommittees so we can see if that's what you want to continue with or if there are any changes you want to make.
Okay.
And then for the, the second meeting in December will be canceled just based on scheduling and when city offices will be closed.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjourn. A millisecond in advance.
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, staff.